So I call this meeting to order. This is the March 11, 2019 work session for the York County School Board. And Ms. Higginbotham is out of town and unable to attend the meeting this evening. But we'd like to congratulate and welcome our newest board member, Brett Higginbotham, who represents District Two to our team. And we're excited to have him join us and we look forward to working together in the days ahead. And he's already hit the ground running. We had a couple of closed sessions earlier, so this will be his fourth meeting of the day after being sworn in at the school board office at a little after three this afternoon. So congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So we have several presentations lined up. And the first one's the update on the FY '20 operating budget. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members, and welcome, Mr. Higginbotham. I'll turn the first presentation over to Mr. Bowlen, who is going to give us an update on the operating budget for FY '20. Mr. Bowlen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, thank you for this opportunity to provide you with a budget update this evening. If you recall at the public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget, I mentioned that the state had completed its budget process, the General Assembly had completed its budget process. We were looking at a loss of about 110, somewhere between 110,000 and 450,000. Well, since that meeting, we received the calculation template from the Department of Education, and we're going to lose about 400,000. The loss can be tied primarily to two initiatives that the governor proposed. The first was adding the additional counselors, school counselors. So the governor proposed reducing the ratio between students and counselors. And in that action, it added funding for four additional counselors to our budget. So we have those four counselors currently in the budget. However, when the state passed the final version, it only funded a little over two. So we're going to continue funding, working with funding on two of those counselors that will eliminate two from the budget. And that will save us about 130,000 of the 400,000. A second initiative can be tied to the compensation supplement that the governor added, which was the additional 2% on top of the 3%, which was already in the budget. And the governor had proposed 2% being added and that funding being available July 1, 2019. However, in the final state budget, the General Assembly gives us that funding September 1. So we lose two months of the funding. It's going to cost us a little over $100,000. So we will have to make up that difference. On the expenditure side, we've seen some continued work with New Horizons and their budget process. So if you recall in the superintendent's presentation, our cost of New Horizons for next year was going to be $460,000. So the superintendents have continued to work with that budget process. And as it stands today, our costs have been reduced by 110,000. So no longer 460, it's down to 350. So collectively, we've saved about 260,000 of the 400. We still have 160,000 that we need to identify in savings. But where we are right now, we understand that the governor may take some actions with amendments and through the veto process. And if that happens, we'll know more about that when the General Assembly reconvenes on April 3rd. So at this point, we're not proposing that we take any additional actions. We'll just wait to see how the state, how the rest, the remaining budget process plays out. And then if we still have a budget shortfall to make up, we'll bring those back to you in either May or early June. And that concludes my presentation this evening.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bowlen. Thank you, Mr. Bowlen, for that presentation. So next, we have a strategic plan update. I'll ask Dr. Shandor to share more details.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Dr. Karen Cagle, Associate Director of Educational Technology Innovation, will now provide an update on the division's progress towards increasing the number of clubs offered at elementary and middle school levels that are related to high-demand career fields. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Cagle.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will provide the strategic plan status update on the objective related to the number of clubs at elementary and middle schools that increase exposure and interest in high-demand career fields such as robotics, engineering, and cybersecurity. This objective is a part of Goal Two that states that York County School Division will engage all students in rigorous educational experiences. It provides fun and challenging opportunities that promote awareness and exploration in new and emerging career fields to students in kindergarten through eighth grade. As this is a new objective, I'd like to share what is currently happening in our schools as well as next steps. It's very important to our teachers, staff, and administrators to have students who are connected to their school communities. One way to do this is through student clubs. Our principals at the elementary and middle schools reported that during this school year, there are approximately 188 total clubs offered to our K-8 students. This number can vary as new clubs are added depending on interest by both students and teachers. Most of them take place before and after school and can last a few weeks. They may last a semester or even the entire year. There are currently 41 high-demand career clubs this year, an increase of 15 clubs from last year. These clubs provide exposure to several of the 16 career clusters, including information technology, audiovisual technology, communications, and STEM. What you see here is a list of some of the clubs available at the elementary level. Students have the opportunity to participate in a variety of STEM-related clubs that help them develop life and career-ready skills. One example that you can find at several of our schools is engineering clubs. On this slide, you see Seaford Elementary's Bulldog Engineers. These students find building solutions for local habitats, including bat houses and structures for assisting our local duck populations. And one interesting fact about this club is they have over seven parent volunteers who come in and help these students work with the tools and equipment. Here you see some of TAB Elementary's kindergarten and first-grade STEM club teams using their STEM skills to design and build. The students are given specific criteria and expectations to meet. However, creativity is really critical at this club. On the right, Coventry students are working in groups using the LEGO We Do kits. Here, they first choose which robot to build, and then the app walks them through stages of construction. Following this, they code the robot to make it move and create special effects. How cool is that? I recently had the opportunity to visit Waller Mills Technology Club, where students were engaged in a variety of computer science tasks. On the screen here, you can see them using the Scratch coding software, their programming dot and dash robots, and they're also engaging in video game design using Blockzles. Also on this slide, you see fifth graders at their elementary school and their Chrome Club investigating real-world problems and designing solutions through hands-on activities. The Chrome Club encourages its members to work together and think like scientists. Yorktown Elementary staff believe in the power of student leaders. So their First LEGO League members work as coaches to students in the robotics club, teaching their peers how to code the LEGO robotics. Whereas many of our clubs are before and after school, McGruder offers opportunity during the school day with their intervention and enrichment block. This year, over 90 students have participated in Coding Club during this time. Our middle schools offer very similar clubs. On this slide, you can see some of those. For example, coding clubs are very popular at the middle school level. TAB Middle actually has one just for girls, a Girls Who Code Club, that emphasizes the important role of females in STEM-related careers. The pictures on this slide show some of the Grafton Middle School expert coders exploring and building their own computer games. Let's take a look at some more examples. There are over 45 students registered in Queen Lake Middle School STEM Club. Students program VEX robots. They experience virtual reality and engage in creative engineering and Q technologies. The Yorktown Middle School Makerspace Club is a relaxed time for students to create and build. Some days are more techie, while others offer arts and crafts. Materials in a space are provided so students can design, create, and build in a relaxed but challenging environment. We also have competition clubs in several of our schools. The Great Computer Challenge is a joint project of WHRO, the Consortium for Interactive Instruction, and Old Dominion University. This is a yearly competition where students in kindergarten through 12th grade demonstrate their knowledge of various computer applications and programming skills. Bethel Manor won several awards last year. They'll compete again this year along with Grafton-Bethel students. This past weekend, Queen Lake Middle School students participated in the senior competition, and they walked away with a third prize in that competition. We also have the Sea Perch Club at TAB Middle School. This involves remotely operating underwater vehicles. TAB Middle students worked for eight weeks to create a PVC pipe vehicle with waterproof motors and propellers, all connected to a circuit board controller. Our first LEGO League robotics competition requires students to design, build, and program a LEGO EV3 robot to navigate a field of missions using the engineering design process. This year, three of our teams went to state competition, Grafton-Bethel, Mount Vernon, and TAB Middle Schools. So what's next with this objective? We're going to continue to provide support for club materials with available funding. Last year, schools were given end-of-the-year funds as well as additional per pupil allocations to purchase supplies. Furthermore, the school division has received a grant from the Department of Defense, which will provide resources. I'll share a little more about that grant in the next presentation. As our club sponsors are often learning about these technologies along with the students, we want to give them support through training. Our educational technology facilitators in the buildings will do that, but we also are looking at outside agencies like CodeOrg, Virginia, and also WHRO. I shared with you the Engaged NYCSD database last month. So we have business partners who can serve as guest speakers as well as co-sponsor some of these clubs. And we're going to increase our numbers next year. We have three schools who have already shown an interest in participating in a competition with Dot Dash Robots. And then we really recognize the importance of these clubs for student engagement as well as the many ways they support our student learning. So we look forward to continuing our efforts to meet this objective. That concludes this presentation. I'll gladly answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Cagle, for that presentation. And I think we'll pass it on to Dr. Shandor again for the next one.
Yes. Thank you for that presentation, Karen. She is now going to provide an overview of the division's efforts to provide elementary, middle, and high school students with opportunities to increase career awareness, explore career interests, and prepare for potential careers following graduation.
I'll turn it back over to Dr. Cagle.
Thank you. And this next presentation is another strategic plan status update on an objective that addresses career awareness for our students. So our mission is not just to get our students into college or even through college. We must prepare them for the lives and careers that they will have beyond their formal education. Career awareness, exploration, and preparation are the essential components of a comprehensive plan to ensure our students are ready for the workplace. Because this is a new objective, I'd like to share with you how we are developing the knowledge, skills, competencies, and experiences of our students to ensure they are life and career-ready. This slide shows us how students are provided career connection opportunities at each level, elementary, middle, and high. At the elementary level, students in kindergarten through fifth grade are introduced to a variety of career options through classroom lessons, clubs, enrichment activities. In addition, many of our elementary schools host career days, and individual teachers invite guest speakers into the classroom when their expertise and experiences support classroom instruction. Like elementary, there are also clubs and enrichment activities to help middle school students pursue their interests as well as classroom lessons related to careers. However, in middle school, students begin a more in-depth investigation of potential careers that interest them. And I'm going to show you an example of this through our new career investigations course. High school is a time for students to implement their academic and career plans through course selection and experiences that will help them prepare for life in the workplace. I'd like to take a moment to share more detailed information on several of these components. Let's begin with the implementation of our academic and career portfolio and plans. Last year, the Virginia Department of Education established regulations that all students will develop an academic and career plan portfolio in elementary school. This portfolio will include information about interests, values, and skills supporting decisions about future goals, and be available for revisions and updates throughout the student's school career. Our elementary school counselors are working with our students to begin this process using the Virginia Education Wizard, which is an online resource that provides opportunities for students to explore careers and become more aware of what's out there. The Virginia Wizard is also the website that our seventh graders use to take two assessments. They take a career interest and work values assessment and also a skills assessment to help them to write their academic and career plans. These plans provide them guidance for course selection in grades 8 through 12. To provide exposure to careers that focus on science, technology, engineering, and math, our elementary and middle school students have many opportunities to participate in clubs that emphasize STEM. And you saw an example of many of these clubs in my previous presentation. One way these clubs, as well as additional exposure to STEM-related career fields and STEM experiences, will be supported is through a Department of Defense Education Activity Partnership Grant that was awarded earlier this year. This $1 million grant will provide funding over a five-year span to support STEM programs for our elementary and middle schools. More specifically, the grant will fund innovative learning spaces, materials, and professional development. In addition, an eight-day summer enrichment STEM camp for military-connected students will be offered each summer as a result of the grant. We know it's very important for our teachers and leadership to receive necessary training to support STEM instruction. This year, the grant provided funds for 20 of our elementary teachers and two administrators to attend the 2019 Virginia Children's Engineering Convention in February. The teachers returned with ideas and resources that they have already begun using in the classroom. Beginning next year, we have partnered with Melanie Loney, an expert STEM consultant, who'll deliver professional development to our teachers on STEM integration that's aligned with our Virginia standards of learning. And this will continue throughout each year of our grant. In addition, we'll also have a part-time STEM coach to provide support in our schools. Another opportunity for students to explore career pathways is a result of revisions to the standards of accreditation, which require each middle school to offer instruction in career investigations. This provides a foundation for our students to develop their career and academic career plans. We are currently writing the curriculum for this course, and beginning next school year, middle school students will be required to take the course or an equivalent such as a CTE course. The curriculum will help our students in bridging their academic and career development in the elementary grades with information to help them meet their goals to transition to high school, graduation, and beyond. During the December work session, I shared the strategic plan objective stating that by FY '22, all of our students will complete an internship, mentorship, or job shadowing experience prior to graduation. The purpose for these experiences is to help our students develop essential skills necessary in the workplace, as well as help them discover careers they might or might not want to pursue. Another component of our Career Connections program are two industry certification exams that our students are required to take in their high school economics and personal finance course. The Workplace Readiness Skills exam measures a student's knowledge of the 21 workplace readiness skills identified by employers across Virginia as critical to workplace success. And the goal of the Wise Financial Literacy Test is to help high school students as financially capable young adults. Throughout this year, we have shared with you the work of our Superintendent's Business Advisory Council. The council has provided interest and input regarding the career fair opportunities that are for high schools, which are bringing our local businesses in to partner with our high schools. Also, our York County Economic Development and our Public Relations Team are working together to produce 18 career videos that we'll share with seventh and 10th grade students next year. These videos will provide awareness and an authentic view of various career options for our students. I shared the Engaged NYCSD database with you last month, and I'm excited to share. Participation is increasing. We currently have over 70 professionals who have enrolled in our program, representing all 16 career clusters. Please continue to support this effort. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention as I have shared our Career Connections program. And I'll take any questions at this time.
Just a comment. Wonderful stuff. I mean, this is exciting. It's going to be interesting to look back in five years when this has really hit the road running with students, and then they graduate, and where this takes them next, whether choices will be for college or career. This will be fun to watch. This is going to be exciting. So I hope students look at it and appreciate it as much as the hard work is going into it to create it. But I guess the professional development's going to help really the passion of it, so...
And I think parents will appreciate too. Being a parent of children who grew up and needed to choose careers, it's important stuff.
So I love the fact about the Virginia Education Wizard. We're doing that in elementary school, the different steps along the way through middle and then high school. So we have a student that comes into us in the high school level that hasn't been at York County. So is that where the council meets with them and catches them up?
Yes. The council will work with them, tell them with that. Because we do have a lot of those students.
We do. That's great. Great program.
Then one more question. You always ask this question, and that is, we're creating this second, I guess, I don't know what you want to call it right now. Do we have enough staffing at the support level to assist you and others, you know, to make sure we roll this thing out right, I guess? I don't know if that's a question later on going to come to the board for support.
Oh, remember, there's two FTEs in the budget for...
Career coaches.
Career coaches. So we'll have a .5 at all four traditional high schools. So that's a starting point for this. The other thing I would add is, while it is encouraging that we have over 70 participants engaged in, you know, in my opinion, that's not enough. We truly need more support from the county and other businesses in the area on the peninsula. So we've taken our show on the road. Ms. Goff and I have met with the Chamber. Dr. Cagle and I are meeting this Thursday with the E3 group that Jim Noel has in the county. So we're continuing to push that out, and we would encourage businesses watching or parents watching to sign up for that. I know we have a plan to communicate this out as well, a second round of communication to parents. Again, you've got to think how many students we have in 11th and 12th grade who are going to have these internships and mentorships opportunities, what that number is. And we have four high schools, so we can flush those numbers out later, but clearly 70 is not going to be enough. We're going to have to have some more participation.
And when you say you reached out to like the Chamber, the York County Chamber of Commerce, have we reached out to like Williamsburg, the Peninsula Chamber?
We're continuing that dialogue, and we really want the FaceTime with them. We don't want to just send emails to those groups. We have a plan as we're moving this forward.
And we have started. We started last week, meeting one-to-one with some FaceTime meetings with one particular group, and then we'll continue to do that and build on it.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Cagle, for sharing that information, and what a great endeavor. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have our final strategic plan update, and Dr. Shandor. I'll turn it over to you.
So we're going to bring up Dr. Vladu. So Dr. Vladu is our Director of Secondary Instruction. He's going to provide an update on the percentage of 10th-grade students that achieve or exceed the college and career readiness standard. Turn it over to Dr. Vladu.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I'll provide you with an update on our strategic related to college and career One objective on the Goal One states that by FY '22, the percentage of 10th-grade students achieving the college and career-ready benchmark of 910 points on the PSAT will increase by six percentage points. As you may remember, back in FY '16, you funded the PSAT for all 10th-grade students. Before I review progress on this goal, I want to take a few moments to provide information about the PSAT, as well as the college and career readiness benchmark for our view in public. The PSAT, or the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, is significantly connected to the SAT. One of the test's primary purposes is to act as a precursor to the SATs, essentially as an SAT practice test. While the PSAT and the SAT are similar in regard to content, structure, and even scoring, they're not identical. Here are some of the major differences between these two tests. The SAT contains an optional essay sections, whereas the PSAT does not. There are fewer questions on the PSAT than on the SAT, and it has a lower college and career readiness benchmark than the SAT. Now to the 10th-grade college and career readiness benchmark. While the SAT college readiness benchmark predicts the likelihood of earning at least a C in a corresponding course in college, this table shows you the expected student growth toward the SAT benchmarks. For instance, you'll notice that a 10th-grade student that scores 430 on the reading and 480 on the math section of the PSAT meets the college and career benchmark for that particular grade level. Provided the student will make the expected grade-level growth, the same student's expected to score 460 in evidence-based reading and writing and 510 in math during the 11th grade. Now to how our students performed. The gray bars on this chart indicate annual benchmarks, while the green bars represent actual performance. As you look at this chart, when this goal was set back in FY '18, 61% of the division's 10th-grade students earned a combined reading and math score of 910 points. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that 65.5% of the students met this important benchmark, representing a 4.5-point increase over the previous year. This graph shows a comparison of 10th-grade students only that met or exceeded the college and career benchmark. The gray bars represent national performance. The blue bars represent Virginia performance, while the green bars represent York County performance. As you can see, in evidence-based reading and writing, our students scored an average of nine percentage points higher than the state and 12 points higher than the national average. In math, YCSD students scored seven points higher than the state and nine points higher than the nation. Lastly, when we look at the percentage of students that met both benchmarks, YCSD students outperformed the state average by seven points and the national average by 10. The PSAT is a test that looks both forwards and backwards. Most immediately, the data that comes out of this false test administration is used to assist students as well as academic programs back at their school. First, each student was provided with an individualized detail report showing both areas of strength and improvement. Second, after taking the PSATs, students linked their college board accounts to Khan Academy, thus having access to individualized practice and progress reports. Our schools have worked hard to bring awareness to this very effective program, and tonight I'm pleased to report that 75% of all 10th-grade students have linked their accounts. Lastly, the PSAT also provides data that informs families and schools on the AP courses students are most likely to be successful in. Through the AP Potential Report, principals, counselors, and teachers recruit students that have already demonstrated the potential to do well in college-level coursework. Now to our long-term action steps. Much of the material assessed on the SAT suite of assessments is directly aligned to the standards of learning. Our teams are identifying enduring standards, or 241, learning objectives that are found on both tests. Through the PLC process, or the Professional Learning Community process, our teachers will be able to give additional attention to these high-impact standards. To increase engagement in reading and writing, our middle school teachers have received ongoing sustained professional... our middle school teachers have received ongoing sustained professional development on small-group instruction and how to maximize co-teaching practices. As you heard from Ms. Skinner back in September, building on our success in K5 Word Study Implementation, beginning with FY '20, this practice will gradually be implemented in grades 6 through 8. In regards to mathematics instruction, as presented by Ms. Pika during the October work session, the new math standards directly support the profile of a Virginia graduate and are designed to increase rigor. Through this approach, students will be in the driver's seat of mathematics teaching and learning by focusing on the five mathematical processing goals. The shift in student-centered thinking processes that are embedded in the new standards will improve the computational and analytical skills for better performance on the SAT suite of assessments. Thank you for the opportunity to present the work of our hard-working teachers, students, and the support of our families. At this time, I will take any questions, comments, or feedback you might have.
You've got a slide four, slide number four. Yeah, so tell me, so in other words, in grade 10, if you score a 430, a 480, combined score of 910, did you say that your chances of making a C in a college-level course, that's what that is suggesting, is that correct?
Primarily, but when they're predicting that, they're looking at the SAT scores, and those are just adjusted benchmark based. If you're making that expected growth, you're on track for those SAT scores, which in turn predicts that C.
So when you go up to the top line here, SAT, tell me what that is saying exactly with relationship to the PSAT?
So I would look at it as a continuum of assessments. And so if we look, for instance, at 480 on the SAT, a student earning that or higher, they could expect to get a C in college in English 111, 112, those introductory English courses.
And the relationship between the grade 10 and SAT, because of what coursework a student is in as a 10th grader and what coursework they're in as an 11th or 12th grader, they're saying they would typically, if a student was making the same growth, they would anticipate that that student who earned a 430 in evidence-based reading and writing as a 10th grader would score 480 on the SAT, or better.
If you remember years ago, the college board had, what was the score of the SAT? It was a 1510 or something?
1600. It went from 24 to 1600.
But there was a number that represented if you got this representative score, this was just three or four years ago. You got this representative score, it means that you would get a B. So this is similar, correct?
Yes. The old one included writing, and because writing is no longer required, the score just includes the
What's the top scale, top of the scale now for SATs?
1600.
16 now. And that would be the combined score benchmark that we're looking at. So they're putting 1,010 at your ability to get a C in a college-level course.
Yes, or better.
Just to ask, I guess, we've seen a time where we didn't or couldn't fund, you know, across the board, PSAT testing for all our students, and then we circle back around and we engage that. And I know there's the ACT out there, the SATs. Sometimes you hear some folks that will rumble things about, you know, does a college really, some colleges, do they use this, do they not? I don't know what the correct answer would be. But as far as what we're using it for, is this the best practice, the best mechanism, the best investment for our money? And so if somebody said, well, you're paying X amount of dollars to test all 10th graders in a PSAT, are we choosing the right model to use because of the effectiveness of where this shows where students are gonna go, I guess? Are there other things out there that would work better or not work so, you know, much better?
I guess I'll piggyback on that. I was just, my only other question was just, I know, so we're up six points on the PSAT. What are the metrics in place to show the relationship between taking the PSAT and taking, and doing well on the SAT? In other words, we know that it helps. We know it's sort of a mini version of the SAT. Are there numbers in place to be able to show that?
To both questions, I think with the new strategic goal, we used to measure our SATs. The new strategic goal looks at the PSATs, because we have the PSAT sort of serves as a formative assessment. It lets you know if you're on track. So if you wanna go to college, it is an industry standard in terms of colleges look at the PSAT and the SATs. They're sort of the, I mean, the other options. We do have some students taking the ACTs, but only a very small percentage. So if students do choose to go on to college, these tests really prepare for them. A majority of our students do have some post-secondary plans and the prepares for that. I think to your other question, we could look at a comparison between the PSAT and the SAT annually. We do look at those scores, but we no longer report in that format due to the changes of the strategic plan.
The other difference is the PSAT, because we are paying for all students to take it, we are looking at all of our student population versus SAT, it's the students who elect to take it. And to your question, Mark, you spoke to, you know, in terms of whether colleges are using it. One of the things that Tony shared was the AP Potential piece. And so as we look at our students and whether or not we're
Providing that opportunity for all of the students.
Providing appropriate opportunity for advanced coursework for students. That AP Potential gives you a lot of information for students who might be quite capable of the work, who, for whatever reason, are not taking advantage of it. So it gives our schools additional information that we wouldn't have if the board didn't support the opportunity for all students to take the PSAT.
And I'm glad you circled back to that, because I think that's kind of something I wanted to hear, because it is an investment. Like, we're spending money to test all students in 10th grade on a PSAT, but just that piece you just mentioned, so that a student that maybe chooses not to take an AP, otherwise now staff or counselors or somebody can actually circle around and go, you'll be very successful in this course, you should try taking an AP.
And I would also want to talk about the other strategic goal relates to increasing enrollment of underrepresented groups in AP classes, the equity goal. So with the PSAT AP Potential Report, what it looks like, we provide that data to principals, and they can go specifically and recruit students that have already shown the potential. So for instance, I might not earn an A in that class, but I have a C, but I really have the potential to do well based on this test. So that data helps them be very specific and strategic in meeting the other goal.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu, for sharing that update. So we're gonna move on to our next agenda topic. Dr. Shandor.
Yes, so Dr. Vladu, he has one more presentation. This is not a strategic goal presentation. This is an update related to quarterly assessments. So he's gonna provide an update on semester exams in high school credit-bearing courses. He's gonna provide background on the work of the Semester Exam Committee and a recommendation, to me, related to Division Assessments for 2019, 2020 school year. So another goal of this presentation is to, for the board to ask and have any questions answered that you may have before we move forward with this change. This will come before you in the upcoming months, related to policy, IGBG, which is online courses and virtual program, IUW, which is exam exempted. And then Dr. Aaron Butler will bring you student handbook changes in May. So that's when the board will provide specific actions. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vladu.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the Boards. And as Dr. Shandor stated, this presentation will provide the background on the work of the Semester Exam Committee and a shared recommendation that will be made, or is made, to the superintendent, as well as discuss the next steps. So first, I wanna provide some historical information. Since 2013, the administration of semester exams in high school credit-bearing courses have been significantly impacted by weather. On this table, the rose and dark gray represent years when semester exams were made optional or were canceled. And though this year's semester exams were administered as planned, we had a close call that school districts to the north and the west were impacted by weather during this time. In responding to teacher and school feedback in the spring of 2016, the School Division convened a Semester Exam Committee that included teachers and administrators from all schools and represented a variety of content and academic programs. The role of this committee was to develop a plan that mitigated the impact of weather on the administration of semester exams. In May of that year, the committee made recommendations relating to exam reviews and parameters for canceling exams. Beyond weather concerns, the committee also raised questions relating to overall exam practices. These discussions continued until 2017 and 2018. One of our major goals is to involve stakeholders in the decision-making process. In the spring of 2018, a survey was administered to middle school and high school teachers, students, and parents. One of the questions was, asked was, what, if anything, should be changed about midterm exams? On this slide, I want to summarize teacher, student, and parent responses. First, I wanna start with the student responses represented by the green bars. So as anticipated, less than 5% of students wanted to keep exams the same. 20% said to change the format, and 70% said to eliminate them. When it comes to parents and teachers, the responses were much closer. 34% of parents, represented by the blue bars, wanted no change. 17% said to change the format, while more than 30% said to eliminate them. 25% of teachers, represented by the purple bars, said no change. 16% said to change the format, while more than 42% of teachers said to eliminate them. The responses characterized by the term "other" were open-ended and were used to provide additional commentary. The survey also gathered data on how much time is used to create exams, review for exams, grade them, and how the results are used. I think it's safe to say that based on this data, it was very clear that something needed to change. So as you have seen through several board presentations, Trigo Analytical and Decision-Making Tools provide the framework to look at complicated issues. Through this process, in the fall of 2017, principals engage in a situation appraisal. This process provided additional insight and developed a path for moving forward. One of the steps identified through this process was to survey teachers, parents, and students, as you saw in the previous slide. Principals shared the results of the survey with their schools and engaged their staff in building consensus. After numerous discussions, East School made one consensus-based recommendation for the future of semester exams. Earlier this year, on November 20th, an exam committee that represented all high school subject areas and division programs meant to make one recommendation. The committee was led through a decision analysis process by Kathy Blackburn, the Executive Director of Trigo. This protocol helped teachers make, helped leaders make effective choices marked by fidelity, transparency, and stakeholder involvement. What drove our work was to identify the best option for assessing student learning over time, because it is the purpose of the semester exam to assess student learning over time. So whatever option we came up with through the decision analysis process had to answer the statement. On this slide, I wanna share the criteria used to consider all possible options. By developing the criteria, the stakeholders saw their concerns included as we created a shared vision of what was needed. For instance, minimizing the loss of instructional time and maximizing the opportunity to gather data for learning were two important criteria. Using the criteria on the previous slide, the committee considered each option. So on this slide, from the top left, the options considered were: One, maintain or status quo or no change. Reduce the exam weight to 10%. Eliminate the semester exams. Count them as a second-quarter test grade. Replace semester exams with quarterly assessments, but count them as an existing category in the grade book. And the last option is very similar to the one that I just shared, but specify the assessment is 10% of the grade as a separate category in the teacher's grade book. Based on the options considered through the decision analysis process, using the criteria collectively developed, the following recommendation was made to the superintendent. Replace semester exams with quarterly assessments, beginning with FY '20. Additionally, quarterly assessments will remain as a separate category in the grade book, weighted at 10%. During January, we took the recommendation to each high school and conducted a modified potential problem analysis, which asked our schools, what could go wrong? What is the likelihood of that occurring? And what is the seriousness? Essentially, we asked, if we do this, this could happen. Our goal was to listen, clarify the information presented, and facilitate a process to identify potential problems. In February, we conducted a similar process with parents at each high school. These meetings are well-attended, and we capture critical information that may be used or will be used to make this recommendation or implement this recommendation. On February 21st and 28th, the Semester Exam Committee, which is composed of each building principals and two teachers from each high school with school or office support, meant to review the process for making this recommendation and categorize the feedback received from school staff and parents. The bulk of the work was to develop a task list for communicating, providing training and professional development, and monitoring the possible implementation of this recommendation. Now that I share with you the process for soliciting feedback from middle and high school teachers, parents, and students, I would like to provide additional information related to the quarterly assessment recommendation. As quarterly assessments are a departure from semester exams, it is important that we keep the overarching purpose at the forefront. Assessing student learning over time is the purpose of quarterly assessment. It should evaluate the attainment of knowledge and skills over time, inform progress for students and their families, and most importantly, how students do on an assessment reflects the effectiveness of the instructional program, and this can and should be used to inform teacher practice. So while I provided the purpose of quarterly assessments, on this slide, you'll notice some defining criteria. Unlike semester exams, that are similar in format with an administration with high-stakes standardized testing, quarterly assessments share the following criteria. First, assessments may take a variety of formats that range from a multiple-choice test to a timed writing, to a performance or demonstration of learned knowledge or skills. Second, while assessments are now required to be cumulative, teachers will have the option to assess cumulatively in order to prepare students for high-stakes testing, such as the SOLs and AP exams. Third, schools will have the flexibility to schedule quarterly assessments at any appropriate time during the quarter. For instance, schools may choose to assess students before winter break, rather than wait until the end of the quarter. Fourth, as quarterly assessment counts for 10% of the grade, the workload and preparation must be commensurate with the grade weight. Lastly, with less focus on standardized testing, and as our graduates are expected to think critically, creatively, communicate, collaborate, and demonstrate citizenship, quarterly assessments provide teachers with choice and flexibility to authentically assess what we value in our graduates. As to our next steps, pending the approval of this recommendation, a subcommittee consisting of middle and high school teacher and instructional coordinators will meet on March 21st to further define and develop parameters for quarterly assessments. Next, the Semester Exam Committee will meet on April 10th to monitor progress and further assign responsibilities. Also, the task list developed on February 28th will continue to drive the work needed to prepare for possible implementation. Lastly, revisions to exam references and policy and the student handbook will also need to be made. So on this slide, I would like to review the impact of the quarterly assessment recommendation on the proposed school calendar. The quarterly assessment recommendation The quarterly assessment recommendation provides teachers with the flexibility to assess at more appropriate times during the instructional cycle. Because quarterly assessments may be given at any time during the quarter, designated exam days will no longer be needed. Recognizing that at the end of each grading period, teachers are already provided with half-day for student assessment and instructional planning time, and the end of each semester requires additional preparation time, we are recommending to keep two early dismissal days at the end of each semester. For example, for the 2019-2020 school year, January 23rd and 24th will continue to be early release days at the end of the first semester. Similarly, June 10th and June 11th will also be early release days. Later this evening, during the presentation on the proposed calendar, Dr. Butler will provide additional information relating to the recommendation made by this committee. So I want to thank you for providing me with the opportunity to share the work of the Semester Exam Committee. At this time, I'm ready for your questions, comments, or feedback.
I just have one comment and one quick question. I like the idea that it gives the teachers the flexibility instead of, I guess, teaching them for a semester exam. They get to actually do more instruction on the material. And I think that's what I got out of that, and I really like that. But just a clarification, just to make sure I understand it and the citizens that may be watching understand that. This is a recommendation that goes to you, Dr. Shandor. Once you make that recommendation, then the policy changes are made in the policy, and that's what we will vote on, on that specific thing.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Following up on his, you know, with the teachers, I'm just wondering why 37, close to 40% said no change on here. Am I reading that correctly?
Actually, that's Slide 4. There you go. I thought it was around...
No, it's 30...what did you say? It's about 37?
Yeah, so out of all the options, change the format, eliminate them altogether, other, a high percentage of teachers are saying no change?
Yes, in the initial survey.
In the initial survey.
Yeah, in the initial survey, and then recognize they did a lot of consensus-building activities within their school.
So that thought is a little different now, in other words. They're...I just want to make sure that they're all comfortable, I mean, comfortable with what we're talking about here.
There have been numerous conversations. We encouraged our principals to share this data, have conversations on the data, what does it mean, what does it look like at the school level, how will it impact our instructional practices? And that information came back to us, then with the committee that we met and listened to our parents and our students. So that was at the onset before all of this work occurred.
Then these guys, the team also went back out to every leadership team, so all of the teacher leaders in all four high schools, correct?
Yes.
MIRA.
And MIRA.
So they're on board as much as you can be. I mean, much as you can get a consensus on anything, I mean, they're on board.
Wouldn't 50% said to eliminate the midterm exam?
Not for teachers.
Not for teachers. Teachers, it was...
So that was the parents, that was teachers of 42.
42% of teachers said yes, to eliminate.
That was parents.
Yeah, it's 30%.
It's just a little over 30.
Yeah.
All right. Couple other things. Does this, I'm assuming these assessments, so now you could conceivably have, you have a midterm, a final, and two quarterly assessments, right?
You'll have a quarterly assessment each quarter. You won't have a...
Talking about right now, I mean, the way this is, the way it is now, you could potentially have how many exams in a...
Midterm and a final.
All right. So if, so if you eliminate this, you'd go strictly with the quarterly assessments, do they align with the college exams in a way that, say, the midterm and the finals would? I mean, what's your thought on that?
So we had a lot of conversation. That was one of the actual, our criteria on preparation students for post-secondary. What we heard from folks is, one, colleges are not on the 180-day schedule. They're more in the 16, eight-week cycle. So while a lot of times your math and science courses may be very assessment-driven at the college level, we have many, many instances where most courses have a final. And so the traditional midterm, I know we see our students before winter break, they come home, I think, at sometime around October, end of October, that there are fewer. We do not have quantifiable data because it varies by college and degree, but we're hearing more and more that there is a final, but the midterm itself is not, that there's, and many folks may think that there are some changes at the college levels.
But this, in your opinion, would prepare them just as well as the midterm and the final would for college exams and that type of environment?
It's hard to tell. I can tell you when I review our grades, because the first chart will show you when they were canceled. And so I reviewed all of our grades, and I provided that data to our principals to look, what was the difference in the years when they were canceled versus not? There was no impact on our SOLs. If anything, you could make the argument, as we said through this presentation, that the student achievement has gone up despite the fact that we had three, or the last six years when they were canceled.
But you're asking in terms of will the quarterly assessments? I think the intent is for teachers to provide appropriate assessments for their course content. Right now, when we have an exam period of three days, as an English teacher, I might be forced into giving something that I can grade within that time period. And so the beauty of having the quarterly assessments where you have them at different time periods, I can assess appropriately for an English class. If I want to give a student a written assignment, I can do that because I'm not confined to, I've got to give this exam this day, and I've got to finalize my grades. And at a high school level where you have 120 students, you can't, you can't give a lengthy assignment that you've only got three days to grade. I think in the fine arts, we see teachers already do performance assessments. So it's really, and it will require professional development. There's been a lot of conversation from our parents and from our teachers in terms of the conversations we need to have so that we don't move to quarterly assessments and have people do, okay, I'm just going to give four exams now. And we're really purposeful about using the term quarterly assessment because it's not, whereas an exam can be an assessment, all assessments aren't exams. And so it's giving appropriate assessments for the course content. So if I teach an AP course, I may give a cumulative test in the third quarter to prepare or to check that my students are prepared for their AP exam. But in another course, it might be more appropriate for me to give to assess different skills that I want to be sure that my students are successful, or that they have those skills set down. Does that help answer that question?
Absolutely. And I realize the data's not there yet, but I just want to make sure we're not taking something away that is helping prepare them for the level of exam they're going to experience in college. That's all. And it sounds like...
And that was one of the criteria that we used to assess all of the different options, is that preparing students for college, post-high school work was key.
Glad you brought that, because that was one of my questions, was that, you know, we're preparing, career-ready, a lot of work and energy going into prepare students for what's after. So that was a concern, was if we change a model that's been in existence for a long time. I mean, students that get assessed or tested at the higher ed level, will they be prepared for that magnitude of what that's going to feel like? I'm glad you walked through that, talked through that. What are other school divisions doing across our region reference to this? Are we going to be, I mean, are we outside the norm? Or are we getting ready to step outside that norm? Or are other school divisions kind of thinking the same thing we're thinking?
So I know that for this particular request, it came organically from our, you know, our schools, our teachers, it's sort of developed, they are local school divisions that are looking at it, and they're wanting to the south side of the other side of the tunnel that has gone and had this conversation, they had these conversations about three years ago. I think in the broader spectrum, if we look at the profile of a graduate and that's what it entails, students taking less standardized tests and really demonstrating that they know something through a performance. So our students would only take an SOL if they needed for graduation. So there's that dialing back of the SOL test, and we need to authentically demonstrate, our students need to authentically demonstrate that they can speak a world language, they can read a menu, rather than just pass a multiple-choice test. So that's across the board. We also heard from our business community that our kids are very good at passing a multiple-choice test, but when it comes to demonstrating some of the skills in the workplace, it's not the same thing. So that's sort of where, as a sort of, as an organization, we want to provide students the opportunities to demonstrate that knowledge, and this system does provide that framework for teachers and students to do so.
So we really hadn't polled other school divisions, but not saying that we should, because we've always been on the leading edge of new and innovative things that we do, and then others try to catch up with us. But I was just curious to see if, you know, other school divisions, because I know that we have some regional programs, so like our students go into New Horizons, Governor's School, things like that, they'll still experience whatever their policy and protocols are.
Absolutely.
So something won't change from our, some of our students, just the ones in-house, I guess, but just a thought. I mean, is this going to lead others in a direction that allows flexibility in assessing students, but at the same time, it's still the professional development piece you talked about? I hate to see watered down something, you know, thrown out.
And truly, that's not the intent. The intent is not, one of the things when we were meeting with parents is sometimes they would say, oh, well, this will be easier. And we were really careful to say, no, it doesn't mean easier, but it does mean more appropriate, that I no longer have to be forced into a multiple choice. And in some cases, a multiple-choice assessment may be an appropriate assessment. So I don't want to say you're not going to see any multiple-choice assessments from here on out, but if it's not appropriate for my course, then I can give a more appropriate. Again, if I were teaching an AP course, one quarter, I might give a document-based question assessment, because that's part of the AP exam. In courses, in our fine arts, you're typically going to see more performance-type assessments. But we've mentioned English and world language, because those are the courses where typically you have more options that you could get with a quarterly assessment. So it's not necessarily easier, it's more appropriate to the course content.
And one last thing. The plan for follow-up, I guess, for us assessing ourselves after we approve this and it moves forward, at what point would you look at, is it working? Did we make the right steps?
So that came up from our parents and in our committees, and how will you know this is working? So one of the task list category in terms of getting, we're talking about hundreds of parent comments and students, so we compiled that information into three separate categories. One of that is actually monitoring implementation. What do we do throughout the year, and what do we do at the end of year one to see what effect does it have in our instructional program? But not only that, are we implementing with fidelity? As we shared, worst thing we could do is to take our exams and divide them and continue to give them to students, with the intent of this is actually to do assessment differently that helps our students prepare for those post-secondary opportunities, and also to inform teacher practice. And traditional view is just, here's how the kids did. Well, this points the finger two ways. One, for us to improve our practice, but also to students and the families to know how they're doing. So monitoring that implementation, identifying those metrics, our parents are great, so what is the overall purpose of all of this, and how do you know you're getting better? So we have some work to be done, but it's certainly one of the top three categories in moving forward.
And on February 28th, that's where a lot of the work was spent, was really taking, they categorized all the feedback cards, and then they had started developing a who, what, when, how with each one of those things, so that, but it is interesting that it wasn't just how are we monitoring the implementation itself, but how will we know after the fact that we're doing what we intended to do?
Any other questions?
It's going to be some happy students.
Just for clarification, real quick, so by taking the midterm and the final out and the time constraints for the teachers, it's providing more flexibility for the teachers to tailor the quarterlys to the students to be able to demonstrate mastery of knowledge and skills?
Yes.
Is that the idea?
Yes.
And just one comment, I'm glad you bring that up, because when I said earlier about the flexibility for the students, Dr. Guy, you really explained it well about the difference in the different courses, and then, you know, that depending on what you're teaching, it's always different. You know, you could ask for a research paper here or multiple-choice test.
Absolutely.
And I like that flexibility with the teacher, because they need that, they're all different. That's one part that I did like. And your explanation about assessments versus exams, that's a good analogy there. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
So our last topic of the evening is a presentation relating to the school calendar, and I know there's been some stuff in the news recently that the governors may have changed that we may talk about here, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Shandor.
Yeah, so you heard Dr. Vladu allude to a couple of things related to the calendar, so it's a perfect segue for Dr. Butler, Director of School Administration. He's now been provided the school board with the 2019-2020 proposed school calendar. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, thank you for this opportunity to present to you 2019-2020 proposed school calendar. Per the Code of Virginia, school divisions are required to develop school calendars with a minimum of 180 instructional days or 990 instructional hours. In addition, school divisions are required to ensure that there are 140 instructional hours per course for high school cred-bearing courses and 560 instructional hours in the four core classes at the middle school level. New legislation requires 680 instructional hours in the four academic disciplines at the elementary school level. The current calendar proposal meets all the Code of Virginia instructional requirements. Per York County School Division practice, the 2019-20 Division Calendar Committee was comprised of stakeholders from across the division. The committee met several times to review considerations and options for the 2019-20 calendar. The calendar committee had three guiding considerations when developing the calendar proposal. First, to examine ways to decrease the instructional fragmentation in November, December, and January due to holidays and early release days. Second, to maintain a three-day Thanksgiving break for students and staff. And finally, explore the possibility of a two-week winter break for students and staff. The 2019-20 calendar proposal contains 180 instructional days for students, 191 work days for returning teachers, and 194 work days for new staff. New teacher orientation is scheduled for August 15th through August 20th, and all division teachers are scheduled to return on Wednesday, August 21st. The General Assembly recently passed House Bill 1652, which allows all school divisions to begin the school year prior to Labor Day if certain guidelines are followed. The regional and YCSD calendar committees will be discussing possibilities and options for the 2020-2021 school year to make sure we abide with the new legislation. For the 2019-20 school year, the first day of school will be September 3, which is after Labor Day. October 4 has been designated as an early dismissal day to allow for student assessment and instructional planning. Student holidays have been scheduled for November 5, and an early release day has been allocated to November 11. Staff will engage in professional development sessions, parent conferences, and/or student assessment and instructional planning on these days. Similar to the 2018-19 school year, schools and offices will be closed November 27 through 29 for the Thanksgiving holiday. Winter break is scheduled from December 23 through January 3. This totals 10 days for the student holiday. Schools and offices will reopen on Monday, January 6, and in observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, all schools and offices will be closed on January 20. As Dr. Vladu shared in his presentation, the Division Semester Exam Committee has recommended moving away from a midterm and final exam assessment format to a quarterly exam structure. Instead of three early release days in January for midterm exams, the 2019-20 calendar contains two early release days, January 23 and 24, to reflect this change. January 27 is a student holiday and has been designated as a teacher workday to align with the regional calendar. Schools and offices are scheduled to be closed on February 17 in observance of President's Day, and an early release day has been scheduled for February 28 for student assessment and instructional planning. For the 2020 presidential primary, the York County Board of Elections is anticipating significant voter participation, especially during the morning hours. To compensate for the anticipated volume of citizens voting, a late arrival day for students has been built into the calendar for March 3. Staff will report at their normal work hours, students will arrive on a two-hour delay. Consistent with neighboring school divisions in our region, spring break will be the first full week in April, which is April 6 through the 10. An early release day has... An early release day has been scheduled for schools and offices will be closed on Monday, I'm sorry, an early release day has been scheduled for May 8, I'm sorry, for May 8, and then offices and schools will be closed on Monday, May 25, in observance of Memorial All students are scheduled to have early release days, June 10 through 11, for the last day of school for students on Thursday, June 11. Graduation is scheduled for Friday, June 12, and will be held at William Mary Hall. In the event of unanticipated school closings, identified holidays and teacher workdays have, may become makeup days, the executive leadership team evaluates each situation Thank you for this opportunity to present to you the 2019-20 proposed school calendar. A recommendation will come before you at the March 25 School Board Meeting for approval of the draft calendar. I am now available for any questions.
I'd just like to make a comment, I appreciate you covering that, and more especially the governor's new law that he signed, allowing all divisions to start before Labor Day, because I'm certainly, certain that's going to be a question that's going to be posed to many of us as board members, you know, are we, can we? And I guess they need to understand that we're trying to work on that, and if we do that, and it'll be a regional issue that we'll try to do regionally. So appreciate you covering that, thank you. Any other questions? All right, great. Well, thank you, Dr. Butler, for that presentation. That's great. And I want to thank all those that presented for us tonight, all those presentations, we appreciate the time that was spent, because it does take a lot of time to sit there and make sure you're covering everything and make sure you're doing it appropriately, it's not just for the board members, but certainly for our viewing public out there, so thank you for that. Our regular school board meeting will be on, next one will be on Monday, March 25 at 7:00 p.m. And is there a motion to close this session?
I move motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion made in second. Have a great evening, thank you.